Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, our mission statement. Chris?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide equality education that empowers students to-
Be successful in a global community. Dan?
Here.
Jeff?
I have no idea where I was.
Okay. Tracy?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I'm here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next would be approval of the agenda. Motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian?
We have in the personnel report, you'll see we've had some transition with some of our coaching staff, hired some, and well, some have resigned for personal reasons, but I'm excited to introduce to you tonight Ashley Stolacki. She started with us in the Department of Student Support Services in the main office, and she'll be working with not only the administrative team at the high school, but also Shirley Metashewski, the Director of Student Support Services. So welcome, Ashley.
Excellent. Welcome. Good to have you, Ashley. Anyone else?
I think that's it.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our Board of Education student representative report. Haley?
Okay. So I'm gonna start with the elementary school. The Lee Talent Show was two Fridays ago. Previously, I announced that it would be one Friday, but I had to get booked because of snow days. And kids participated in singing, dancing, playing musical instruments, comedy, and karate. And last week, the elementary school started the True Blue Students at Lee. And this program recognizes two students each month at each grade level for their success in academic behavior improvement or any criteria a teacher feels would be appropriate for that. And March is Reading Month has started with the theme Feeling Groovy, Peace, Love, Books. The students at Lee are being challenged to read 135,000 minutes. If they reach this goal, Ms. Borwick will get pie in the face, and Mr. Manguni will get eggs cracked on his head. So there may be real sports about that. And the PBIS program at Lee is celebrating positive student behavior by having pancakes with the principals tomorrow morning. Mr. Manguni and Mrs. Borwick, along with the PTO, will be celebrating the student behavior with the pancake breakfast. Okay, now into the middle school. Today, actually, Mrs. Bartels was holding a school-wide pie day celebration because today's pie day. And there was gonna be penny wars for volunteering staff members to have pie thrown in their face. And pretty much any staff member that would volunteer, they would have a jar with their face on it, and the students would have to put pennies in it. And that money was going to go to the Rainbow Connection. And the middle school actually had their choir festival today. I have not received results on that, so I'll have that for your next meeting. But I know the sixth grade went for the first time ever, I believe. So their sixth grade choir and seventh and eighth grade choir went today. And freshman orientation was March 8th. Okay, now into the high school. The Richmond varsity competitive cheer took second states two weekends ago. And I would like to congratulate some Richmond wrestlers. Senior Aaron Kilgorn, he placed first in the 125-pound weight class of Division III Individual State Championships. Colton McKeonan placed third at 175. Roy Costello placed fourth at 112. Alex Roberts placed fourth at 140. And Graham Barton placed sixth at 135. And Cody Keller placed seventh at 119. So that's all in the state, so that was good. And Mach Trial performed well. We did not place, but we had a lot of fun. We learned a lot. So that was two weekends ago. I was a part of that, and I had a lot of fun. I'd like to thank Mrs. Teltow and Mrs. Bartels for coming out and helping support us.
It's a good time. It's a good time.
There's an NHS induction ceremony tomorrow here at the high school at seven. The new National Honor Society members will be inducted into that. The Richmond High School yearbook, last year's yearbook, 2014-2015, won a National Yearbook Award for Program of Excellence. So we have a banner for that hanging up in the computer lab. There's a new reading contest going on for the high school. And I actually have a paper for it right here. It's, we're tying it into baseball because the prizes, some of the prizes that will be part of this are tickets to a Tigers game. And there's certain bases, so you have, for every book you read, you get to fill out one of these. And first base is you take a creative picture with your book, and you get it put into a drawing for a $10 gift card to something. Second base is you have to explain why you picked this book to read, and that's a $25 gift card that would go into that drawing. And third base is writing a quote or passage from the book that you like, and the prize for that would be a $50 gift card. And then home base would be a paragraph summary of the book in your own words, and that would be four tickets to a Tigers game. And I'm actually participating in that, so I just picked out The Pearl by John Steinbeck. I haven't got to start it yet, but... So that's pretty neat. So we're celebrating March's Reading Month here at the high school, too. And our choir festival for the high school is tomorrow at Dakota High School. I'll be performing in that with both the concert choir and the women's choral. Band Festival was last week Thursday, and they received a Division I rating, so congrats to them. That's the best rating. And the robotics team, one the judges awarded their competition this past weekend. So congrats to them as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Haley. Okay, next, Superintendent Legislative Update.
I'm going to read an email we just received tonight regarding the sixth grade. The sixth grade choir attended for the, what they believe is the first time in school history at Dakota, the Choir Festival. But our seventh and eighth grade choir earned a Division I rating, which is the highest rating they can receive. So that is outstanding for that program with, not only what they do in the band program with Mrs. Shack, but also Mrs. Newman with the choir program. Really a phenomenal program. So that is right off the presses. I just wanna remind everybody tomorrow, as you heard, is the National Honor Society induction. If you're able to make it, we'd love to have you. It's a great evening in inducting the new members to the National Honor Society at the high school. On Wednesday at 5 o'clock, we have the preschool roundup, which would be the Class of 30-31 roundup. So if you're able to come, we have, we start the evening with the dinner.
Twenty thirty-one?
Twenty. Twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one. I don't see that you were listening. There you go.
We were. We all prepped.
Twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one. And then at 6:30, we have the Class of 2029 that we are welcoming in. Again, there will be a dinner for those families, as well as an opportunity for them to see the classrooms, meet the teachers of the kindergarten and many of the other teachers that will be there, as well as the book fair will be going, a lot of great activities going on Wednesday night. So if you're able to come, please do so. Some things just that I really think as a community, I'm strongly urging you to pay attention because it will affect, as we begin our budget conversations tonight, what our budget will look for. They are continuing to hear the reform plans for Detroit Public Schools. I've mentioned this several times. They are actually having several meetings scheduled this week to take that up. There is a plan to create temporary funding because it is expected that on April 8th, they will be out of money. And if you remember, probably about 10 years ago, there were some districts in north, up in the north, that ran out of money and literally closed their doors because they had no money to operate. That's what Detroit Public Schools is facing, and the solution is gonna, it's a, we have to solve the problem, but it's gonna affect all of us across the state. Several, last year, I talked about a third grade reading bill, and the premise of that bill was if students did not, were not proficient on the state assessment, that they could not be passed on to fourth grade. That bill has now resurfaced again. Representative Price has introduced House Bill 4822. Slightly different change. The premise of it is if students do not pass the proficiency in reading, they are to be retained. However, if they pass proficiency in the other subjects, they can move on to fourth grade, but will be still considered a third grader. So if you pass proficiency in math, science, and social studies, you would move on to fourth grade, but you still would be a third grader. It's the latest version. There is some good cause exemptions in terms of has some leeway if there are extraneous circumstances with the child to have them move on to fourth grade rather than retaining them. This is, to me, very critical because you're basing a lot of this data on a state assessment. And as we know, we just got the state assessment from last spring, this past January, on the MISTEP. It's a, it's a new assessment. It's changing again this spring in terms of last year, it was what we call a stagnant test. You basically just answer the question. This year, it's adaptive. Where based on how you answer the test, we'll adjust the type of questions that you will receive on the assessment. I'm very concerned with this legislation, as well, as well as the other superintendents across the state. To me, this is not good legislation. I think that decision, when you're talking about retaining whatever your beliefs are, is a decision that needs to be made between with the parent, the teachers, and the staff that have worked with that child, and the principal at the building level to determine what's in the best interest of the child. Because if I just look at research, the research shows there's no proof that retention even works. So we're looking at many children's lives that would be affected by this legislation. And when you look at it in Richmond's perspective, on that one assessment, you're talking at least 50% of the third graders. And we have other assessments that we can prove that they are proficient. They are above grade level, but they're basing on one assessment. So just keep that in mind. I would strongly encourage the community to watch that bill because as with a lot of legislation, sometimes they get tied barred together in the 11th hour to sell a package, and this has been out there for several years as a push. This week, there are some budget hearings, the House appropriations on the school aid fund, as well as the Senate's appropriation. And when we get into the budget discussion, I'm gonna share some of the options of where we are right now with some known variables and the unknown. This is one that we will be watching very closely because a lot of this allocation, the budget allocation, deals with what the solution's going to be for Detroit Public Schools. And with that, I think I'm, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next is items of interest from members of the board. This is March is Reading Month, and to show that school board members read books, too, we're each gonna share a book that we are reading at the present time or just read. Start with Tracy.
Sure. For the last couple of years, I have brought textbooks from some sort of master's class that I'm taking, so I have those, too. But this year, I thought I would bring some of the different, the other reading that I'm spending time with. This book is called Healing the Heart of Democracy by Parker J. Palmer. And because of the interesting political wilderness that we are experiencing these days, I brought this book back out. It's actually from 2011, and I read it then, but I'm rereading it just as a way to bring some courage and some hope into our thoughts about, my thoughts about the democracy that we live in.
I don't have a whole lot of time to read personally with having to read to all the kids, so... But I will say, since becoming a board member and doing this, I make it a point each year to at least try and order a book and read it at some point throughout the year. I know most people probably read a book in a few days. It takes me a year to read, to read a book when I'm not reading Dr. Seuss and Brown Bear. Brown Bear, what do you see? And the book, the book that I recently ordered off Amazon is What You Need to Know: 29 Most Asked Questions About an Autocratic Leader by Jerry Stevens.
Well, I have been, for the last several months, the administrative team, Ms. Michonne, Mr. Bartels, Mr. Manguni, and... Mr. Burke Meyer, as well as Mrs. Metashewski, and I have been participating in a leadership development course at the MISD. And the base of this course, Balanced Leadership, is what it's called, and it talks about school leadership and what works. And it's re, kind of re- piqued my interest in terms of what we know as effective leadership. But I, and the conversation we've had about moving our district forward and what we want as the leaders, and how do you, to move the staff that you work with in the right direction. But I also have committed, since the last time we did this last year, that I would be reading for fun more often than, than I have been in the past. So I've been really focusing on going back to my roots as an elementary teacher. And there's a series of books that I've started reading, which are pretty fascinating. They're called Michigan History Nightmares. And I actually, when we had the Winter Fest up here, this is a Macomb County author. She was actually a teacher out of Lake Shore, I think it is. It might be Lakeview. And she retired, and she taught Michigan history for years, and she was always trying to figure out a way to teach history to her students that's engaging and exciting. And so there, she has a series of books that talks all about Michigan history. This one's talked about trapped in the lower peninsula. And each book, there's a, there's a pen that's associated with that. When the author or character clicks the pen, it takes them back into the classroom. It's kind of a, to get out of what they're dealing with. So it's, it's pretty fascinating. This is one that I want, when I'm done with them, I want to share with the teachers over at Lee because I think this would really grasp a lot of the kids' attention, and it gives content to really what we're trying to teach in a fun, exciting way. So they're a great series, so she's got a whole bunch of them out, so... Lynn Smiles is her name.
Very good. Well, I left my book at home, but my book is Go Set a Watchman. It is the sequel to To Kill a Mockingbird by Harper Lee. And I got it for Christmas, wanted it really badly, and have been a little bit disappointed that it wasn't as good as I thought it was going to be. And I think that maybe Harper Lee didn't really write it. That someone else maybe wrote it for her, so... But I'm about three-quarters the way through it and hope to finish it. But I have put it down about three or four times and read three or four other books. But I will finish it because I wanted it so badly, but that's what I'm reading right now.
I challenge myself similarly to read for pleasure this year.
And I'm, I really, I'm doing one book a month. So I've had a lot of sleepless nights because I get enthralled in them. But I didn't bring my book because I do all mine on a Kindle reader. But the last one that I just read was Rewinder by Brett Battles. And it's a science fiction book about time travel. And it's, the neat thing about it is that these people go back into his, or these rewinders go back into history, and they set history exactly as it was, so it's a little historical teaching. And they are there to actually see, did, is history written the way that it really happened? Or is it just written that way because that would satisfy the masses, basically? And so it was just an interesting book on time travel.
I don't read for leisure a lot either, really ever. I read for work. I read to enhance my skills at work, and I read to my kids. That's all I really read for. So I brought The Rescue Princesses because this is what my daughter and I are reading right now. And the thing I like about this, she's only five, and these are chapter books, but we're on number nine. This is a series, and we're on number nine. We started reading these probably a year ago, so when she was four. And a lot of people would maybe underestimate a four-year-old following a chapter book when really, there's not many pictures. But she gets it, and the thing I like is that after we read a couple chapters, she'll act out all the scenes, and it's about princess, it's like this group of princesses who rescue animals. And she really grasps it. So I love reading these with her. This is great. And there's usually a mystery and a bad guy, and there's a little, you know, you have to figure things out as you go. So I can see the wheels turning as we're reading it, and I like it. So that's the one I shared. So I would recommend this, you know, even with little kids, I think you can start chapter books early, and I think they, they pick up on it, so...
I am reading a book called One Shot at Forever. It is by Chris Ballard, a senior Sports Illustrated writer. It is a true story from the year 1971 in Macon, Illinois, about a town of about 1,200, and their small-town baseball team makes it all the way to the state title, title game. And just their journey and different coaching aspects and whatnot that may have been a little bit off the wall, but worked for them and got them to the last game.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other items from board members besides our books?
So it was great fun to go and watch the trial. And congratulations to you. And Dr. Lad, thank you for making sure kids have that opportunity. It's just great to watch, and it's my first time to be there and watch it, and it's just great, so... And the talent show, the Lee Talent Show was like awesome, absolutely fabulous. Made me laugh, made me cry a little, and I loved the big wig at the end. Mr. Manguni had a, had a pretty wacky wig on. It was all good. So thanks for all the teachers and all who helped support the kids. And they inspired me, watching those kids be up there on that stage and being brave and courageous. They just, it's pretty inspiring, so it's good stuff.
I had a chance to go and, I went all over the state last weekend, and I had a chance to go and watch our girls' bowlers compete at the state level, which was awesome. They did come in 12th, but it was nice to see that very young team at such a high level. And then I had a chance to support the cheerleaders and go and see our cheerleading competition. And I think it was one of their best performances all year, and they really had a lot of heart and soul into that competition. So very proud of them for holding their head high and just competing at a, at a very good level.
Anybody else?
I just want to say to the Mach Trial, to Dr. Lad, thank you. I loved every minute of it. And I gotta tell you guys, Haley is something.
She's something else.
Haley's gonna be something big someday. When she, when she, at her age, she can get lawyers with their mouths hanging open and commenting about her. She's gonna be something. You're welcome. And the talent show, I was there as well. It was great. I think one of the key things for me at the end of the night, yes, I forgot Mr. Manguni had the big wig on his head.
He did. It was great.
Mr. Manguni and the teachers that were up there performing and kind of letting their hair down, if you will. There's nothing quite like that, and that's what it's all about. That's what the kids are there for, screaming and yelling, watching their teachers, seeing their teachers do crazy things, and just letting their hair down for the kids. And Mr. Manguni, thank you for leading that, and that was a tremendous effort by the staff members.
Anybody else? Okay. Next, we'll move on to our presentations, budget.
In front of you, you should have some. Let me try this again. These documents I... Sorry, my mic's not as good as it was. Tonight, over the next eight board meetings, and there will be eight board meetings till the end of June left, is to begin the budget discussion. And throughout this process, I want to make sure that we're up to date in terms of what the latest is in Lansing, which affects our budget. And with this, having the end in mind in terms of our last two meetings. Our projected target date is the June 13th board meeting, which we will have a revision of the current budget of FY '16, and then a proposed budget for FY '17, fiscal year '17, with the approval of that budget coming on June 27th. That's, that's our target plan. There is a chance that when we have to approve, because by law, we have to approve the budget by June 30th, that we may not have a budget in the state. We may not know what our per pupil is. So we're gonna, some of our budget may be based on assumptions that we know as of today, and we'll change and adjust. So with that, as I did last year, over the next several board meetings, I'm gonna be bringing you pieces of the pie, if you will, so that we can look at the big picture, as well as focus on each, each of the pieces. We're gonna talk tonight about just an overview of the process. I want to make sure that everybody is understanding that what the function codes that make up the budget are. And I'm not necessarily gonna go into necessarily detail unless that's a request of the board, but I want to, at least for those who are new to the budget process, I think that would be Sarah and Kyle, just to understand, to make sure you have the pieces that you need to approve that budget come June. Tonight, we're gonna talk about some budget assumptions that we're making. We're gonna look at projected enrollment for next year and projected revenue for next year. Again, these are some, these are some beginning assumptions we have as we move forward the process. I chose this graphic because I'm gonna start in the middle, which is the classroom. So in the upcoming meetings, we're gonna talk about, okay, if we want to keep our class sizes at a certain level, this is how many teachers I need. If we want to keep our existing programs, these are how many staff members I need for those programs. In your packet, you'll see a description that looks like this. It's a black and white document. That's a description of all these function codes, and that's, that's probably about 95% of the function codes that make up the budget. When you look at 111, that's elementary, that's the elementary staffing that we have, the classroom teachers, our specials teacher. 112 is the middle school staff, and 113 is high school. And as you go through, you see where we have talk about guidance and counseling, that falls under function code 212. I purposely highlighted the function codes up here in red because every one of those function codes, when we're starting to look, talk about them, we're talking about people. Nine, easily 90% of our budget, if not more, is about people in our organization. And so when we're adjusting, rightsizing, whatever you need, we're talking about people. And I don't ever want it to sound very cold-hearted that I don't, you know, each one of these people has a story and a contribution to our organization, but I want to, the reality is, we're talking about people. So if we're gonna make any type of reductions as we go through, we're probably reducing people. Okay, so... Some of the assumptions that we're basing on, and before I get into the projected enrollment and revenue, is currently, we receive our funding based on two count days. In February of this year, February '16, and October of '16, they take those two count days, use a formula, which is 10% in February, 90% in October, and that gets us our total FTEs. That FT, that total number, multiplied by our per pupil, is what we get for our state aid allowance. This formula is being... This formula is being considered at the state level to be changed, to have 50% of it count in February and 50% of it count in October. And I'm gonna show you how that, that helps us, um, from our enrollment number when we look at budgeting. So this is one thing that if you can get on your legislators and say, if you have the 11th hour, this formula over all of them, we would rather have than the 90-10. Okay? Most districts in the state of Michigan, and Richmond's no different in, in the last several years, has had a declining enrollment. So your fall count typically is less than your February count. And if most of your money is based on that fall count, then it hurts us in that case. Where it doesn't help us is if we were on the flip side in terms of our fall count is higher than our February count, then the 90-10 formula is a better formula. But from a budgeting standpoint, if I know there, there's, I'm not being penalized for, and the idea behind this is you have districts, when they get to count day, they could have a drastic drop in numbers. And this helps soften the, the loss of revenue for those When we look at the, um, per pupil dollar amount, currently, there are many proposals out there. As I mentioned earlier, the House and the Senate. I'm gonna start with zero because that has been something we've experienced in the past. And I'm gonna give you some scenarios from, as, the most I have seen is the governor's proposal, which qualifies $120 more per child, uh, if that goes through. Now, what I don't know is, is that a straight towards the foundation or is that partially towards the foundation, partially towards at-risk funding, which then has strings attached to it? So there's always some, some caveats as I'm, I'm sharing what we know to date. Okay? Questions about function codes or budget? All right, I want to talk about enrollment projections. If you give me a second to flip the slides here. Can I go increase it? All right, let's slide down. So what you have in front of you is a chart that looks like this. And starting in FY ' '13, I wanted to give you a trend history of, of the district. So you'll see in FY '13, based on the previous year, February 12 and October 12, we had a, a blend, what we call a blended count. That's that 90-10, um, combination. At some point in history, it was, it was at 80-20, I think it was, but it was 90-10 there. We had 1,644.55 students. This is not the same as head count. Um, head count is always higher than what our FTE counted. We have some students that, for instance, that go to, um, the Pankow Center in Launce Cruz. So we don't receive a full body count for them. We only receive the time they're here. We have some special education students that may be on a reduced schedule. We only get a partial FTE. Um, full-time equivalent is the FTE. If I'm using terminology, anybody, I mean, just let me know. I will clarify. So when you look at the FY '14, you'll see, uh, a blended count of 1,559. We were down about 85 FTEs. When you look at FY '15, we were down about 34 FTEs. Let's see if I can get that far out. When you look at our current FY '16, uh, we looked at the February of '15 versus past fall's numbers, we're about 1,473.19 is the FTE that our budget's based on. And we amended that budget in February to reflect these current numbers. Okay? So when you look over the previous year, we had anticipated being down, um, 90 students when we built the budget. Let me shrink this slightly. 90 students and we actually weren't down that much. Um, we're only down 51 students. But we also had new expenses that came into consideration. So when I move forward to next year, the, of the two numbers that I have to look at, the February 16th is already come and gone, and the February, October 17th count day, those numbers are based on taking our current enrollment and moving them up a grade level. So for instance, in kindergarten, we have 100.77 FTEs of kindergarten students. I moved that up to the first grade. We currently have 76 FTEs in first grade. I moved that up to second grade. And you can see moving that up. All right? So when you look at moving that up, the, um, let me just back up here a minute. The first number that you'll see on the top, that 10, you'll see 30, that's ECSE. That's what we code it in Power School. Those are our early childhood special education students. And then everything else is by grade level. At some point, we, we used to service St. Augustine's and St. Pete's. We no longer service those, so those FTEs are zero. So when you look at the column L and M, I put a side-by-side comparison to show what that formula would do for us. If we're at a 90-10 blend, we would actually be down 51 students. If we follow the 50-50 blend, which is what's being proposed, we're actually down 32.54 FTEs. So just on a simple math, um, if you take the 32.5 and you multiply by 7,300, we get a student. Vicki's at 73, so?
73, 91.
73, 91. Um, just take 7,000. There's $210,000 less revenue we have going into next year by that formula. If you take the 50 and you multiply just even 7,000, that's $350,000 in less revenue. Okay? So throughout this process, this is gonna be our assumption that we have to make, is we have to determine what's our account going to be to build our budget. And we really won't know that count until October. And then once the, the numbers are certified, that will come up in our February amendment for the budget. So we have two numbers here that we're looking at. I'm budgeting this year's kindergarten on 80 students. We had over 100 last year. We've had in the last couple of years, um, basically three sections. This year was somewhat of an anomaly. Um, I should say we had three sections the previous year. We'll know this coming Wednesday how many students pre-register. Uh, we'll have an idea of how many students are, um, projected to come. So that will, this, that number may change based on the registration we have on Wednesday as well as the rest of the year throughout this process. My hope is that it should be around 100, four sections of every grade level. Any questions at this part on? So at this point, I am projecting that our enrollment is going to be down for next year, simply by, by attrition of the students moving from one grade level to the next. All right. Now, let me talk about what that means in terms of revenue.
I mean, that's, that's happened for a number of years. So just based on, right, that difference between the incoming kindergarten class and the outgoing senior class.
Correct. We, we currently have more students that were graduating.
Right.
Than we have coming in.
Than we have coming in. Just real quick about FTE stuff. Is those students who are dual-enrolled, we get a full FTE for them, but, but that money goes to pay for college tuition.
If we have a dual-enrolled student, we have a full FTE, but then we pay the fee to the colleges that they're dual-enrolled.
Right.
If they are, um, um, one of the students that attends, like the AI, uh, yeah, I said like an example because they're still our students, um, the Pankow Center.
Pankow.
We only get a partial of their day that they're actually here.
Okay. And does that same partial happen for students who go to the Armita Math and Science Academy?
Yes.
Right? We get part, okay. For the hours that they're present here?
Correct.
We get funding for.
Correct. So now I want to look at revenue because this is some assumptions that we're, we need to make. And I'm gonna break this up into some multiple slides or some, if, I'm gonna start on the right side, which would be column, um, I, J, K?
K is the last one.
K was the original budget that we approved last June. J is the budget we, we approved in February. When you look at those line items, you'll see some changes. And I'm gonna go all the way down to the very bottom, the last page. From our original budget in June, we had 13, we projected to be about $13,034,000. In the budget we approved in February, uh, we had an increase in revenue. Some of those, if you, if you recall, we had more students than we anticipated. So you had an increase in revenue. We had title funds, which are very specific and, and restricted, so it's not like we need them for anything. That increased. Our carryover dollars of once all the, if you will, the dust settled, the bills cleared and the, the payroll was settled and the, we applied for the carrier, our carryover dollars for grants would now apply in that carryover or that, that amended in February. So we had an increase in revenue. When we look at the line items, you're gonna see some codes that say it's restricted, meaning it's strictly for special education. It's strictly for Title I. You don't have a lot of discretion over it. What I did was I took the column J numbers and I just moved them over to column I because that's what I'm anticipating, bringing you this coming June for our final budget amendment. I don't anticipate getting any more revenue from the state. I don't anticipate, um, what may change that is our final gate receipts, our, our, if, if there's any change in our rental fees that we charge. When I go through these line items, you're gonna see that here. That may change that bottom line in I. With me so far?
But otherwise it should stay.
Otherwise it should stay. Now, uh, like I said, we're only talking revenue. I'm not talking the expenses because the, the concern I have on expenses is, well, now we're in the heating season. If a boiler goes, there's a huge expense. Um, if an air conditioner goes or some catastrophe that's not covered by insurance, that would be an expense that we didn't budget for and nor would we traditionally budget for. So when you look at column H, which is the blue column, you're gonna see the revenue assumptions moving forward. And I'm gonna try to do this as best I can for the listening audience and for the board. The first section is, let me go to the top page, very top, is all our property tax that we received as, uh, from the various municipalities that they collect. So we have approximately $2.7 million in property tax we collect. That's the same that we anticipated this year. So I didn't budget any increase because that's, um, that's a market increase in terms of the dollar value here. When you look at the next couple of line items, um, 131, when you get into tuition, it's still 3,000. We charge a summer school tuition. Um, when you look at the actual expenses, our expenses for summer school oftentimes exceed the tuition we bring in because we're trying to charge a rate so students have the option of credit recovery and that's at least a reasonable rate that they can afford it. Um, so that, that tuition rolled forward. You'll see transportation fees. Those are primarily your field trip fees that we collect from classes. You use our bus truck, busing system. Again, you'll see gate receipts is 171. Um, we roughly bring with all the, the gate receipts, where you pay $5 to get in, about $55,000. We are hosting this year, um, a district, Mr. Bordeaux, I'm looking for you, softball and baseball. So there's a, a potential of additional gate receipts there. I don't know how much. You know, we gotta work out logistics because it's not as easy as the football field where you all gotta go through one gate. We've got multiple entrances on the district. So there's a lot of logistics we have to work out to capitalize on that, if you will. When you look at pay to participate, we collect about $55,000 in pay to participate fees. That's for the middle school and high school. Um, what comes out of that account is already the reimbursement. So those that, that did the fall sports and earned credits to be reimbursed, um, as part of the pay to participate, those bills have been paid. We are now ending the, the winter season. Um, so I'll be getting from not only Mr. Bordeaux, but also Mrs. Borwick, those that we reimburse, you know, like Ticket Taker, um, some key positions that we, that the district reimburses. So that would come out of that. But we're estimating that we should end the year about $55,000. When you look at 181, childcare fees, preschool fees, that's the before and after school childcare that pay to, uh, the four, three or four-year-old paid preschool. Um, GSRP allows us to, for those families that are on the, I may not be using the correct term now, the bubble for qualifying. We have a gliding scale, uh, scale that we can charge them a small portion rather than it being free based on a, a formula that's, that's established by the ISD. Um, so we expect to bring about $1,500 in revenue from that. So that's our community services account. Rental, we do have a, a budget item to collect $4,500 in rental fees this year. Uh, I am in the process of, uh, sending out, I've met with almost every group. There's a couple that we've had to reschedule and coordinate times to go over, uh, based on the, the rental fee that was approved by the board. So, um, I don't know where that's gonna fall until I get all, meet with all the groups at that point. Miscellaneous services, we do some shared time agreements, uh, with the mechanic. We have a halftime mechanic in the garage that we service New Haven's buses. They reimburse us for his salary. So though you'll see it as revenue, you're also gonna see it as expense. So it comes in and out, et cetera. Then when you look at this, uh, oops, sorry, this unrestricted state aid, this is where the numbers fall for our per pupil allotment. So for instance, in the blue column, you're gonna see if we got no increase from the state, zero per pupil, based on the projected enrollment, using a 50-50 blend, that would be what our revenue would be on a per pupil basis. The yellow column represents if we got $50 per student. The gray column, column F, represents if we got $100 per pupil, student. And the E column or the, um, orangish, um, peach, peach color, uh, represents if we got the 120, which is what the governor is proposing. Salmon. Thank you. All right. So then when you look down at the bottom, you've got restricted, uh, revenue, which is 312. This is the MIPSers offset, basically, uh, the state aligns money that to help pay for the retirement. They charge us and then they give us the money, but then they take it back. So it keeps that cap lower on our, our costs. When you, if you scroll to the second page, you'll see, um, some of the at-risk funding we receive, special education, um, vocational money that we receive. Again, those are some, some of these are assumptions as we finalize the classes. That may change. Our at-risk funding may decrease if we have less students in the district and our allocation that, that may go down too. When you look at function 317, the restricted, um, the trig, um, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this, the GSRP funds, um, that can only be spent on GSRP, grade start readiness. You'll see all of the carryover dollars we have zeroed out because the expectation is by June, we've spent the grant and that there shouldn't be carryovers. So as we get closer to June, I'm anticipating those carryover dollar line items will have some type of revenue in them. But again, you gotta remember, that's very restrictive on what it can be used for and it can't be used for just classroom, um, et cetera. When you look at 414, you're looking at IDA, preschool, special education, Title I. Again, we zeroed out the carryover because we don't know what that's going to be, but assuming allocation move, uh, moving forward, typically in May, uh, we get a tentative allocation, uh, regarding Title I, um, to begin planning for and what that's gonna be budgeted. But oftentimes that does not come in to really July 1. And in this case, the way the state set the system is they put one dollar amount in there, allocated another dollar amount, but we couldn't check, it was more money they allocated to us, but we couldn't do anything in the system because the system doesn't allow you to go over what they budgeted. And so until they fix the error, we couldn't do anything in our allocation. But, um, you know, between Vicki and Anthony on this one, they stay on top of, of the grant funding and the notification. So. Perkins, we moved the dollar forward. We don't know what that's going to be until the allocation. Um, our hope is with some of the new courses that we have, um, that it should go up. Um, to get, it may not. It may be a delay in terms of how they, um, budget the dollars.
And that's totally career tech ed?
Perkins is CT, Career and Technical Education.
Right, okay.
Um, as you keep going down, there's a lot of zeros out. Um, in 518, you'll see this services to other district. Um, this revenue here that- This revenue here, that $5,800 is revenue that we received for shared services with our MEDA for food service as the indirect cost. It's not the revenue for the salary, because that falls under the food service budget. But this is the indirect cost that we're working with the business office can charge legitimately to, for general expenses and so forth. Let's go down here. Some of these we've zeroed out, because we haven't, we don't have any budget. We haven't had any budget in those line items for a while. There's a couple, like the 22I grant, when you look at column I, which is on the top of the second page, we received $11,000 for 22I technology grant. You know, I don't know if that's going to be funded. That's one of those categoricals that they line item every year. If we do, that would increase our revenue, but again, that's very limited in what we can spend those dollars on. It's very specific criteria. So when you go down to the very bottom, I'm sorry, this 2800 is the, for the food service plan. So when you go down here, one of the things that we have to take into consideration is, we estimated a certain dollar amount for childcare. Fees for Latchkey, or after school and before school. If there are unpaid balances, that's going to affect the revenue that we bring in, which is going to increase our profit. And we do work with families. So when we have unpaid balances in the food service, last year, the Lions Club stepped up and filled that void. As I've been reporting to you each week, kind of a running total of those balances, that can't come out of food service, so that has to be an expense coming out of general fund, unless we can find some other source to fill that hole, so. So when you look at the total revenue, again, I want to make sure I say at this point, as of today, we took out the carryover, because we don't know what that carryover is going to be. Really, it shouldn't be. We shouldn't have carryover if everything ran. Now, the reality is, we will have some type of carryover, it just depends how much. So when you look at this sheet, and I'm going to enlarge this so that we can see, I'm going to start here, again, on the left. Our original budget was here. The February budget we amended showed about a $687,000 increase in revenue. A lot of that was carryover. We had increase in student numbers. We budgeted appropriately. I anticipate these revenues to move over to June. When I look at the state gray, or the blue column, and I look at the number of students that I projected, based on a 50-50 blend of $0 per student, we have a loss of revenue of $510,000. So at some point, we're going to have to come back and figure out, how do we right-size the organization to address that loss of revenue? But I'm going to keep scrolling over, because I'm, I have a new leaf on life, and we're going to think positive, and the government's going to come through for us, I'm hoping. But if we even looked at $50 per student, and again, these aren't with strings attached. These are, let us decide how that $50 is spent. We have a loss of revenue of 320. $100 per student, we're at 249. And then $120 per student, we're at 221. So when I come back to you at the next round, we're going to talk about staffing levels, starting in that classroom. If our goal is to keep class sizes at a certain level, based on our enrollment projections, and how many teachers I'll need, I can give you a comparison over, this year, we have, and I don't know the number yet, because there's still around 80 teachers. Well, with less students, I'm probably going to need less classroom teachers. If I budget kindergarten, it's just having 80, rather than having four sections, I could go down to three sections in the budget process. So there's a lot of unknowns, and there will still be unknowns once we approve the budget, because it's that fall count day that determines our dollars. So this gives you a snapshot of a variety of options we have, and I shouldn't say they're really not options, scenarios based on current assumptions. Do I believe that we're going to get zero typically? Typically, in an election year, and trying to come up with a plan to fix Detroit, I think there's going to be some deals cut. I would be completely surprised, I probably jinxed myself, so I'm not going to wood here. I would be surprised if we got zero. But I want to plan for, as we're going through this scope, of what does zero look like for us?
And I know you already said this, but just so I'm clear, this is based on 50-50?
This is based on a 50-50 blend. Everything that the ISD has heard, the legislators heard, there's a lot of confidence in that 50-50 blend.
Really? Okay.
But I also have this as a, as you saw in the 90-10, and just the enrollment numbers, there's a big difference. We're talking 20 kids differently.
Yeah.
20 kids times 7,000, a kid roughly, a child, that's 140, 150,000 dollars easily that could sway this.
Yeah, it adjusts those significantly.
Correct.
So, for the 50-50 then, does that, like, when you get kids that come in to the school after count day in October, you only get 10% for them in February, right? So now you're saying you would get 50%?
Well, there's two for there. In February and October, the state does a snapshot. And they take however many kids you have in the school on that day.
Right.
And currently, they take, let's say you have 100 kids, and you multiply that by .1, and in fall, you have 140, and you multiply that number by .9, and then you add the two together, that gives you your total FTE. Now, there is some cases where students come in after count day, and we have them, or they leave after count day in February, that we can bill back other districts for the time they have for us. Now, typically, that's only for districts outside of Macomb County. Because what we found is, the students moving within Macomb County, the schools, like from us to New Haven, or New Haven to here, is pretty much a wash for districts. So you're going to bill them, and they're going to send you the money right back, because, or they're going to bill you for the same amount, roughly. So in Macomb County, we don't bill each other. But outside of the county, and they do it to us too. They bill us for the time they have our students, such as, you know, like Sinclair and Marysville, stuff like that. So unless the board wants a different direction, my intent is to come back, start each board meeting with, here's where we see is projected enrollment, and it may be just no change. Here's where we see is revenue from the state, it may be no change at this point. And now let's start talking about the expenses, and it's going to slowly chip away at that 13 million very quickly. And at some point, we're going to have to discuss, if the class size wants to be a certain level, it's going to require a certain number of staffing. We have made a lot of adjustments, and I just want to remind the board that the budget you approved is $700,000 lighter in expenses than the previous year. You know, we did adjust staffing, we did adjust administrative. We had eliminated some positions and consolidated some roles. So we've already made a huge change in the organization, but to date, our expenses still exceed our revenue.
Well, for those of us that have been on the board for a number of years, I mean, we've been doing this every year. We're downsizing and redoing and...
I don't think in my whole career, I've ever been in a part of a budget that got to add stuff back.
I know, right?
More, I think.
Unfortunately.
That's a sign of public education, since Proposal A passed and local patrol was taken away.
Right, no, I think this is a good process.
Okay.
Yep, good beginning.
And if at any time, anybody has any questions, I would be more than happy to, because it can get confusing quickly, and I just want to keep it more of that broad level, because I'll be looking to my team to start putting all the details together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, request for overnight trip to Washington, D.C., Dr. Ladd. Yep, please.
I believe everybody has the paperwork and the itinerary and everything. This is my seventh overnight trip to Washington, taking the kids on. So it's evolved over time, but it's pretty much the same. It's all self-funded, we don't do any fundraising. Moms and dads cut all the checks, which makes life simple. For me, not so much for the moms and dads. We have a bigger, we have a bigger group this year, we have 32, 20 students and 12 parents who are going, and we're flying out on Friday, the 13th in May. And we'll return, and bright and early in the morning, we'll meet out in front of the school at 3:00 a.m. We get our flight out, we fly into Baltimore. We take, we've got a tour, a tour, excuse me, a charter bus that picks us up in Baltimore and takes us to our hotel. And then I am the tour guide from that point forward. We get Metro cards, and we just ride the Metro all over D.C. for three days. And then we come home Sunday night, and we're back in school, ready to go Monday morning. All chipper, so. Chipper may not be the right word, but, in fact, I might be the only one who gets back to school on Monday, to be honest with you, but, yeah. Yeah. So, but as you can see there, we, I keep them pretty, pretty active, and everything has been, the White House, the only thing we're waiting on, we never hear from the White House till about two or three weeks before we actually take off. But everything else has been booked and paid for, and everything is good to go.
And this, what class is this?
This is the, my We the People class, my juniors, and my AP Government, and then a few Stragler brothers and sisters in the, in the U.S. history, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
It's a great trip, and I go every other year, so if any of you want to climb, every other year. So if anyone wants to climb onboard in two years, I'd be more than, more than happy to take you.
Thank you. Just so you know, the process you present to us tonight, and then two weeks, it'll come back before us to approve. You don't have to come to that meeting, you are welcome to, but you don't have to. We will let you know, Mrs. Michon or Mr. Wamsley, you know, that everything is good to go, okay? And if, in the meantime, between now and then, if someone on the board did have any questions, they would get them to Mr. Wamsley and ask you, and we could get them answered our next time, so, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Excuse me, one thing, Haley's meet, on Thursday is our Lucky Charms cereal eating contest at the high school that she did not mention. I am the four-time defending champion, which is the only reason I mentioned.
Very good, oh Haley, you missed that. Well, so, we'll make sure she reports back to us on your victory. How does that work? Okay.
Seven in the morning is what it happens.
Seven in the morning before school.
On Thursday.
Wow. Lucky charms. Okay. Aren't the Lucky Charms the marshmallow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Shorter marshmallow.
Oh, that's, okay. Next, Michigan State High School Clay Target League, Mr. Bordeaux.
Mr. Bordeaux walked, I just want to make sure you have a lot of the information he's going to share in your packet, regarding the process, and not only meeting with Mr. Bordeaux, but Mrs. Michon, and some backup regarding the Clay Target League. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Before I get started, I just wanted to let Dr. Ladd know that I will be there Thursday morning at 7:00 a.m. I'm challenging him to take him down. I've been training for several years. It should be quite a showdown. I'm presenting here on the Michigan High School Clay Target League. How this came about was I was approached about to take the Clay Target League from one of our students. My advice to him was to get a signup sheet together, and see if the interest was there to move forward. The interest was there, we had 17 students sign up. The student who initially brought this to me was already a member at the Richmond Sportsman Club, and I contacted them, allowing us to use their facilities to shoot there. The Richmond Sportsman Club graciously accepted, and really started advocating for our students and the league throughout the community. I spoke with Doug over at the club, and he has found many sponsors who are willing to help out the team, both monetarily and with coaching and guidance. Like I said, the club has been very supportive within the community, striking up interest and supporters. All students within this team are required to have a valid Hunter Safety Certificate. The cost for this league per student has been approximated at about $250 per student. Students have been made aware of this, and families will be also. In the process of scheduling, we are in the process of scheduling a parent meeting with students at the club to go over many items. Officer Fred has volunteered his time to help out with this league. He's also a member at the Sportsman Club. Students and parents register online. Within the $250 that we approximate, they can go up or down a little bit. $25 goes to the league, which comes with insurance from the league, and $5 goes to the Richmond Sports Club for their membership, which also grants them insurance while they shoot on the site. This team will be self-funded, and there is no affiliation with the MHSAA whatsoever. I contacted the MHSAA, they have no rules on it. This is a private club, self-funded club. I believe there's about 11 schools in the state that have one or are starting one this year. We will just maintain an internal account here at the high school, just to house donations and any fundraised money for this club. Shoots are done weekly, and scores are recorded online. So once they show up and they shoot, they'll record, Officer Fred will go on, put their scores in, and they will go from there. And there is a state event at the end of the year. Like I said, Officer Fred has volunteered to be our coach. Officer Fred has, you know, much experience in his background, besides being a police officer. He is the shooting range master for the Rich, he is the master for the Richmond Police Department, as well as the Richmond Sports Club. So not only does he coordinate some of the shoots at the club, he coordinates the police officers when they go and shoot there. There's, there's quite a bit of, there's quite a good amount of information online. If you go on there and Google the Michigan High School Clay Target League, I believe you have some of the bylaws and policies of this league. One of the things they're promoting, when you go and you click on a lot of their PowerPoints, you know, they rest their hat on, it's probably the safest sport there is. They've had zero accidents since they've been around for, I believe, over 10 years. You know, it's a lifelong sport, you know, the students will be engaged in. The community's support has been overwhelming. I've been receiving emails, probably for about two weeks now, from people I've never met, that are willing to come out and help, you know, do anything they can, donate money, things of that nature. So it's really kind of a grassroots organization, in terms of coming from the students. The students found this to me, and brought this to me. It was really neat, you know, because I had the kids go and do the signup sheet. And it's one of those things, you know, we get a lot of things that come to us, and you don't know if it's going to gain the excitement and gain the momentum. And, you know, they showed up a week later with 17 students, both, you know, male and females on this list. It was, it was pretty exciting to see. So that is where we're at. Students register online, they're going to, they're going to absorb all the money. Families will know, and the students will know. Now, this $250 is probably a little high. We don't know in terms of how much fun, you know, how much money will be given, or fundraised for, or donated, but it seems like there is, there is quite a bit of interest. So that is where we are at.
Just to follow up on a couple points. In your packet, you'll notice that this, along with the question, would be too, that I would recommend not assigning the pay to participate, because the rationale behind it is, they do not qualify for a state competition tournament, because it's not...
Through the MHSAA.
Thank you. So because they're solely funding themselves, there's no obligation on the district's end to help offset some of the costs. Though bowling is a club, it participates and qualifies for reimbursement, like we do with all the people, these groups that go to the state competition, to help offset those costs. So that's why we would assess the pay to participate for them. So that's the line of distinction, if you will, why some would be and some wouldn't be. There is, in the permission slip, this would be, from my end, very heavily stressed from the perspective of, the rifles that are used are not to be on school property and grounds, because that would be qualify as a weapon which could end up in an expulsion. So I don't want it to bring a student here. So as we go through this process with students, educating them on where that gun is housed... So as we go through this process with students, educating them on where that gun is housed. And it's not in your car, it's not in your trunk, it's not on ground. So I don't see that as a problem, having Officer Fred be our coach and how seriously he takes gun safety. And the students that are involved, I don't foresee that to be a problem, but it is something that would be stressed to the students.
And there's also discussion about having them house some of their shotguns at the club if there is a, you know, a shoot right after school. But preliminary, what I got from Officer Fred, and he wished he could be here, he is on vacation, that the shoots will be in the evening, once a week. I want to say Wednesday, don't quote me. And then they would have a second opportunity Saturday, like nine AM, to get their, you know, their shoot in for the week.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just have one and if I missed it in this stuff, I'm sorry. I know that we're talking about Fred McCallum Moore's, the coach, and we're talking about other people out at the Sportsman's Club, working with our students. We will have them, they will have to do the iChat and all of that, correct?
Anybody involved with the students, and you know, I think I did leave that out, but anybody involved in the students, we will get their names and have an iChat. It's a very easy process and we can get that immediate information.
Okay.
And the reason why it's an action item tonight is because there's, you know, we've had a lot of discussion. And I mean, this was a, for me to bring it to you, I wanted to make sure we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is because, you know, we're dealing with guns and students and I want to make sure they are safe and so forth. So we did our due diligence. There is a timeline that students need to register by, so that would be our only reason why I'm asking you to, I'm recommending you approve it tonight.
When is this season? I don't know.
They began shooting right after spring break.
March first, we have to commit. And so we have at least put our name in the half that we can, we didn't commit to anybody's students, but we said that we're interested in to begin the process, get the information. They have until tomorrow to register the students on the system, so we'll be working tomorrow to get that. Practice begins the week of March first, or excuse me, March twentieth. Second week is the twenty-seventh. And then competition begins April tenth. And I apologize, this is, I did not, I just printed this off from the website because I wanted to get some most current information. So they'd be in competition the week we get back from spring break. And there's, it looks like there's a series of five weeks of competition. And then in June, they have in Mason, Michigan, the large organization for schools all over the state to come and compete, based on how well you did through the competitions.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bordeaux.
Next, phase two for the bond.
As Mr. Berkmeyer comes up, I'm going to, in your packet, you should see a spreadsheet that looks something like, excuse me. Back in December, I brought to you a list of items that we began prioritizing in terms of, with the contingent money that was unspent because some things came in under budget, less than what we expected, that qualify, that could be paid out of the bond. What are some priorities that we had? At the end of the list, you will see, I'm going to start from the bottom and work my way up, or at least start. You'll see the revenue sources, the construction, over, under budget, the technology. This was talked about last December. So from this, what we had budgeted for furnishings, again, the construction and technology. There was a PA system that we got credit for because we were looking at a broader picture of what we're going to do in that system. Not purchasing printers, but we had a copy solution. So it came to about a million dollars that we had left to allocate. So at the top of the list, you will see the stuff that is in red, we have done. And so the dollar amount in J is the actual dollar amount for those items. On the far-left column, you'll see a priority list. So when we sat with various members of the organization, I asked, you know, prioritizing, the wish list, if you will, what critically do we need? So we started, the next phase that will be brought to you is the furniture. And again, we had estimated numbers on that left side. The stuff that is in blue on that list is what's here before you tonight as a presentation. It's primarily the areas outside of the classroom for projection and sound systems. There are some that we looked at, saying based on the cost that came in on the budget, kind of reprioritized knowing the systems that came through. And then what will be coming forward again will be more of the furniture, which would be, we are still reviewing those bids right now and looking at. We're actually getting a classroom set so staff can come in and look at the furniture, see which one works for them in the big scheme of things. So with that, I asked Mr. Berkmeyer to explain what is it in the technology, video and audio system that we are looking at tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to give a little background on this process to start with. When we, as a group, decided that we wanted to provide the technology in the classrooms along with our one-to-one systems and we started looking at what technology that we were providing in that classroom, we decided that we were putting not only the projection systems, but sound fields in every classroom at that point as a universal use for all students. At the same time, we determined that the sound fields that we were looking at in each classroom was really not adequate for what we would want in a music classroom. So at that time, we met with the music teachers to have a discussion about what that sound system in a music classroom would look like, what capabilities it would need and what functionalities that they would want to see. And at that point, that we put together a list, we did have some companies come out at that time, but at that time, it was too early in the bid process to be able to commit those dollars. So now that we are further along in this process, we did send those items out for bid and that is what made up the bid package that we were looking at for these different areas, but most specifically for those music room systems, based on what the teachers thought would be most beneficial to a music program in those systems. So starting at the elementary school, we would be looking at completing, well, all of the bid package, first of all, was universal in the sense that we want to create a system that is similar in makeup in all the rooms so that when a teacher moves from one location to another, they don't have to learn how to use a different system because they're in the cafeteria versus the music room versus. So one of the items that was requested in the bond is that it has similar functionality and the same systems type setup so that ever, any user, we can provide training on one level and that any user would then be able to use it in all those locations. At the elementary school, we'd be looking at doing the media center and providing upgraded projection system and sound system. So especially for staff presentations, that is the area that is most utilized, but also parent presentations in that area right now. We do not have a current sound system or our current projector is hung on the opposite side of the room. So this would allow it to broadcast off the computer and again, allow the same functionality that we have in classrooms with wireless projection. In the cafeteria, where we hold many of our large group meetings, our concerts, we would be looking for a sound system that would cover both the cafeteria and gym area. This would allow us to, whenever we have a concert, be able to open up that wall or when we're looking at, for example, Roundup that's coming up, we'll have also a projection screen that will drop down. So as we do presentations to parents, that it will have that cleaned-up look that we have in all of our other areas and be able to project across the whole area. The elementary music room will have a similar setup to the middle school music room, the middle school choir room and the high school music room, the high, in that it will also have that audio mixer in there. But not only will it have playback functionality, it will have hanging mics so that our teachers can record the students as they're performing. This will allow them to not only cut tapes for solo ensemble to practice and send in things, but it will also allow for that student review of their own work. It also comes with some boom mics so we can set up for band and give the opportunity to both cut on a flash drive and on a computer or cut to a CD for individuals to take home. With this, we are also looking at some of the public spaces that we use for meeting rooms, such as IEP rooms or conference rooms in each building. We would be mounting one of our existing projectors that we had taken down into a conference room in the elementary that we currently use for IEPs. Along with that, at the elementary, as the board may know, the elementary, when it was originally put together, it was the first building that we were starting to move towards with technology. So technology was put in that building, most specifically the smart boards and projectors over a period of years as dollars became available in that building. Because of that, they have several different models of projectors that are in there. That makes it very hard for, one, providing a consistent bulb in case one burns out. But two, because of their age, several of the projector's circuit boards are actually burning out where the bulb, even replacing a bulb will not make them work anymore. And it's just due to the time that they've taken, that they've been put in. So we would be replacing nineteen projectors in Lee Elementary, so we have one consistent projector throughout the all over classrooms.
Most of the projectors there are at or beyond their life expectancy and we've had to do a lot of maintenance and service, which is very costly, especially some of the bulbs that are current projectors, are several hundred dollars just to replace the bulb. And so that's some of the thinking behind it.
Moving on to the middle school, again, thinking of where we hold public meetings for parents and curriculum nights, we would be looking at the middle school cafeteria to be adding a video screen and project, a sound projection system. It currently has one that is no longer functional, so we would be putting in a new sound projection system along with the screen to project. The middle school band room, as I mentioned, which would have the same functionality with hanging mics and boom mics and the ability to record also, and I didn't mention in the elementary, we're also looking at our instruments to make sure that, for example, our electric pianos will be able to plug into that system so that you'll be able to record that music as we're doing it as well. In the middle school, they have both a band and a choir room, so both of those rooms would have the same functionality put together. Again, the middle school conference room, we would be hanging one of our existing projectors that we took down in this process since it's not used as quite a regular basis, but it would allow that functionality to be able to project, especially for IEPs as we move through that process. And then as a safety item, the middle school kitchen currently does not have any speakers that are on the all-call system. So if we were to go into lockdown or an item such as that, the kitchen currently cannot hear those announcements. So we would be adding some speakers to that kitchen area so they could hear any safety or public service announcements in there.
I am working on, which is not allowable by the bond, looking at some of our current speakers where we're having some sound issues, whether the sound's too low and so forth. So that is still on my radar too, in terms of how do we solve that and fix it. But that repair wouldn't be a bond allowable expense. Where the middle school, these are new speakers, they don't have anything there.
Moving on to the high school, as Mr. Wamsley has mentioned, the last couple of meetings, we are looking at the high school auditorium there. We would be looking at a complete rewire of the audio system within the high school auditorium that would clean up what we have, that we would be using some of the usable equipment, but most of the equipment would be moved to a digital system. We're currently on an analog system, which would give us more functionality of the system and allow us to have some presets within the system. So for example, volume could be adjusted at the stage level without going into that actual mixer room.
Outside of a performance, that's a critical function because if I'm, and I'm thinking of Ms. Michon the other night with the eighth grader, if there was an issue with the sound, she's got to have someone in that sound booth controlling where, what Mr. Berkmeyer talked about was these can be preset systems that literally on the outside of the box on the stage, you're just turning up the volume if you need more volume. And it's a very simplified system for that type of presentation, but still has all the capabilities when we get into production as being able to adjust the sounds.
It would also include new speakers. The speakers for that space is, are undersized and they don't cover the full range. So these would be full-range speakers mounted that are appropriate for the space and size. We would also be looking at the high school cafeteria here, both an audio and video system that would have several functionalities when we could use it for parent nights. If this facility wasn't big enough, obviously, we'd have the auditorium available to us. But with the possibility of a broadcasting class in the future, we'd see this as a great opportunity for our broadcast students to be able to simulcast or live broadcast into the cafeteria where concession stands might be going or when you have a large wrestling event and there might be teams gathering in the cafeteria. And while something's taking place in the gym, you could have it broadcast on that screen as well. Again, the high school band room, similar to the elementary and middle school. One difference is because of the sizes of the room, there'd be a couple more hanging mics in the actual high school band room. And then again, the high school conference IEP room would get an existing projector that we would be hanging in there for meetings.
Outside of the conference rooms, as you look in the list here, you'll see some of the items. They include, the bid with package was written, so it includes all expenses related to the installation. So electrical, if they need to run specific cabling, et cetera. A lot of them are motorized projection screens because you don't always, like in the elementary school or the middle school cafe, you don't necessarily want that down the whole time because you're more likely going to have damage to it. But it can be brought down when needed.
They'd also have the same wireless projection system that we have set up in all the classrooms that both teachers and students are used to using so that you can wirelessly project from any of our current student devices or teacher devices to those systems.
So if I was Mr. Lad and I want to take my We the People group down to the cafeteria, the system allows him, just like he would in a classroom, to log on and project onto that screen. So it's not a new system you have to learn. It's part of the embedded systems we have as our district standards. So the two pieces here tonight, one is the technology piece of it. And one of the, what I'm asking for tonight is the approval of that so that we can begin this process spring break. Our goal is to have the, all the elementary classrooms, while teachers are out of those rooms, to replace the projection systems in those classrooms. The auditorium's going to be a little more challenging because we're going to have to coordinate around band, play and some of the systems that already have booked the facility. But what it will allow then is, once we have this system, to get that cadre of trained people to use it so we can manage who has access to that facility so that we don't have what we currently have.
Just to clarify, in the auditorium, are there new microphones being purchased?
It would be a combination. There are some usable microphone systems that we currently have that when they looked, they're perfectly usable. They might be in no battery. But they would also be providing both lapel mics and, yeah, as part of that system to make it fully functional.
I said that there's twenty-four tall, is that what, I mean, you had less than that before? The ability to use fewer than that at times? Yes and yes.
I'm going to say it's sixteen.
I was going to say it's a six. So it expands the number that you can use all.
Well, we looked at, when we looked at all these systems, we not only looked at what are current. at what our current needs were, we had the conversation about where do we wanna go in the future. You know, if our ultimate, one of my ultimate goals, uh, pending board, is to have that arts academy. And what does that look like? And so, we need to have a system that's gonna expand with the needs of that. And now that we're looking at, uh, broadcasting classes, how do they tie into this? Where I, where I see, and one of the comments I made to the, um, the reporters from the, the Blue Devil Gazette was where I see that class expanding to is kids that are interested in the, the production aspects and, and how do you film theater and the sound aspects rather than, it may not necessarily be television broadcasts. So, how do you, how do you put in a system that allows for that expansion, yet is easy enough that wherever you are, if I'm a high school teacher or I'm an elementary teacher, I can use the system and I don't have to be trained on something and have a, a fear of using it because it seems so complex.
So, would those microphones include the, the face mics? I know I'm probably not using the proper terminology, but the ones that we get taped under our face?
Uh, they would have the body packs. A couple of them would. Uh, the actual, uh, I'm not sure if they'd be lavalier mics or if they, that those, there are some options that we still have built within this price that we'll be working with those individual teachers, 'cause they also talked about, um, instead of miking individuals, uh, and I forget what they call them, but mics that go right at the front of the stage to pick, yeah, the floor. So, there, there are some, there are some options that we have within the cost that we built in here that we, we could switch things around based on, on what we're looking at specifically.
It allows us to expand. So, if we need those or, or the mics that clip on to the actual band instruments.
Oh, right, right.
I don't know. There was a call, so I'm not a band person, I apologize, but there is a mic that actually clips on. That, the system allows us to, to bring on those mics and, and expand the system as we need.
How many, how many of those cheek mics you?
I, I could be wrong, but I think we only have four.
A lot of times they, what I'm hearing when I met with the, the directors from the odd is sometimes, um, they were borrowing them from the odd for our performances.
That's our plan for my vibrator right now.
So.
Is to borrow. Cause I think the odd is twelve.
Yeah.
I don't know how many channels we can hook up. I'm not really into that part, but I know that we're gonna need more than four or five vibrators.
Yeah, and she wants them really the best for singing and for speaking.
So, then the idea behind this, we said start to leave school at spring break, but wanting to approve this now and do it is that all this will get started and it'll be done by the end of the school year is that the?
Our intent in talking to the vendor is that he's done outta here by the time school gets done because he wants to get off his summer schedule. Um, and so, to be complete here. So, as we have spaces, like I, we've had the initial conversation that there's no reason why, um, he can't do certain rooms like the IEP rooms that are not being used or a cafeteria outside of when the students are there for lunch, they could be working in the cafeteria. So, it's not a, necessarily required after hours requirement. So, um, they know they can get the, the nineteen projectors that are needed for elementary and have them ready to go so they can begin during spring break and have that part of it done. This other stuff is gonna be ordered, um, and, and get installed as soon as we can. So.
Okay. Any other questions?
And Brian, just to confirm, okay, so we had.
On the priority list, we had those rated as four, but you're saying you like reevaluated it and now it's, the priority has gone up above?
No, they're still la, they're still rated as four on this side here, the blue.
Yeah.
But as you look at the items here, number ones?
Mm-hmm.
We've done.
Have been done, sure.
Number two, we have the bids in, we're reevaluating. That's gonna come to, our plan is to do number twos.
Okay.
Cause that was part of the original bond is replacing classroom furniture, student chair.
That's what they're looking at right now, the teachers.
Correct. We, we have ordered some classroom sets, cause there's a different, couple different style desks that we're looking at to see, what we're looking there is multifunctional. That if I'm a teacher that wants pairing, groups of four, groups of five, the furniture is allowable. Currently at our high school, a lot of them are the sled desk, which the seat and desk are all one. You can't, you don't have a lot of flexibility with them and they, they take up a lot of space in the classroom. Um, so, this part, I don't wanna, I'm planning on bringing to you numbers two and numbers three to you.
Okay.
And when I look at numbers threes, we talked about portable chairs. Our current blue plastic folding chairs, um, I think they're beyond our, the life expectancy. There's some, there's a lot of them that we have been pitching because they're just not safe anymore. So, one of the concepts that we're looking at is primarily at Lee is where we need some type of chairs for parents to sit in if we're in the cafeteria doing something, performing. Um, I'm not gonna bring in the kindergarten chairs because of the size. So, I would need a set of chairs there. However, the chair that we're looking at at the middle school and high school has the flexibility that we have to get the cart and we can utilize chairs right from the classroom for that evening event, put them right back in the classroom, um, as multifunctional.
Okay.
So, rather than have a set that just sits there and is utilized a couple of times, we can, we can be a little more creative on, we're trying to get our biggest bang for our dollar, uh, on the bond. And, and when we look at the furniture, what you're gonna see is, uh, both desk and chairs that are multifunctional. Um, one of the things that we're requiring on like the furniture is there's a hook on the desk so the, the student laptop bags have somewhere to go while they're in the classroom. So, details like that are some of the, the, the things that we're looking at. Again, the shape, the high school may have a different take than middle school or elementary school. Um, what we're trying not to do is create unique furniture so that as enrollment shifts, I don't have the flexibility of moving furniture building by building because it's unique to that building. We're trying to create some, some type of standard that's adjustable for height, but yet is multifunctional. So, numbers two and three are gonna come to you.
Okay.
Um, so, our plan is to still, in the, the, in our budget, we still have the dollars for that. Where we are right now is the technology which, um, is the stuff in the blue here. You'll see some of the projectors, like we do have the cost for the media center at the middle school. Um, I think it's about fourteen, ten thousand dollars, I don't remember. So, right now, we're, we're not, because we're looking at, could we utilize the cafeteria with the new curtains, the stage, the sound, could that be a meeting area? It's not to say in the future, I don't, may not come to say, we, let's look at the media center at the middle school. In the gymnasium at the middle school, um, currently there is a sound system in there. Um, it is actually running on an extension cord over the door that plugs in. So, one of the things I wanna do is get permanent electrical so it doesn't run, but there is a potential, I need to replace just the speakers if that system is working, cause there is some concern with the speakers. Well, to replace the sound system in the gym, that came in at, oh, I didn't, I didn't list the dollar amount on there. Do you have any chance to know, Mr. Berkman? I'm guessing ten, twelve thousand dollars. It might have been. So, we, within this, we started prioritizing. Like initially, the Lee Media Center, we did not list that in there. But when we started looking at all the meeting places that you have at Lee, that room is utilized a lot, both by school staff, but outside, PTOs, if, if I were to hold a meeting there, I'm more likely to have the media center, if it's a smaller group, then open the cafeteria out.
The gym was ten thousand three hundred dollars.
So, you know, not necessarily, we're not gonna do the gym, but we're gonna look at, could we use our existing system that is still usable, but just make some changes.
And I see that you've got like a proposed vendor for the rekeying of the middle school. I'm remembering back to when we had those series of fire alarms and the firefighters could get in certain areas. Is that out for bid then, or is that close to being somewhere?
That is the idea. So, the next phase is we did the middle school, we did the high school.
So, no schools done?
Or, excuse me, I'm sorry. We did the elementary school. Let me go back. We did all the exteriors of all the buildings when we went to the swipe card system. Then, we did the elementary school and we just finished this spring break and they're actually coming out to do some adjustments this coming Thursday for the high school. Our next phase is the middle school, and that's what I'm estimating based on the number of doors that we went through in the high school and the number of doors in the middle school. The last phase would be all the external buildings, like concessions, garage, um, stuff like that, which is gonna be a much smaller number, um, but that was the intent.
So, that's coming.
That, that is coming and it's built into the budget so that we can rekey, um, the middle school so that we have that. Um, we know who has keys to our building. We, we've signed them out. We have access, um, and if there's a issue we had.
Safety too, yeah.
Yes, it's a safety issue.
And then, what's the plan then for the furniture and when that's gonna come back to us?
Our plan for the furniture, we're targeting.
The first meeting day, we would be presenting, the second meeting.
Okay. And so.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And so, then, after that, then we would get something that tells us then how much is still left or if we've reached?
When you look, what I did on this sheet, and I did on this sheet is I estimated based on where the bids have come in, we're replacing furniture. How many classrooms, I need roughly thirty, thirty-two chairs in a room, how many desks. So, that's what this number is in this column. So, when you look at the total column, I zeroed out all these which were lower on the priority, we're left with about sixty-five thousand dollars left in the bond. Now, there are some of those priorities we did not do. There's some that could come in, like the middle school rekeying. That may not be that cost. It may come in less because when we actually go through and count every single door and how many doors have keys on the inside and outside, um, that may be, that may be less than the high school.
So, then with that, with that dollar, if that's the dollar, then something will be coming to us on, uh, additional.
Here's what's left.
Wishlist or whatever we wanna call it to finish that out.
Well, there's, there's some things on here that we've zeroed out that we're gonna have to look at at some point. There, there are some rooms where, like carpet is buckling. That's gonna have to get replaced at some point. There are some, and that's where this stuff here at the bottom, um, there are interior doors that never got replaced at the middle school. Um, we've had a lot of repairs. That might be something we wanna look at.
Right, but I'm saying that.
But yeah, yeah, that will come at the next phase. Once we've got these, the bids out, awarded, that will be the next, I guess, the last phase if you.
So, the sixty-five thousand we have left, that's after we finish what? Like, what, what does that account for? One through four?
That accounts for all the copy machines, the heating and cooling unit transition from the honeywell to.
One through four.
One through four.
Pronounce it one through four.
I think it goes through five.
It goes summer five.
Actually, summer five, which I wanna talk, which is the next item that I'm not, not asking for approval tonight, but we'll come back to you at the next one, which is the storage cabinets at the elementary and middle school.
And I remember the last time we brought this up, I think it was Jeff who had brought up. If we wanna kinda take a tour around and look at some of these things.
Cause I know, you know, carpet was on here and he kinda looked around and said, maybe this doesn't have to be replaced. But if we wanna kinda take a tour and look at some of these things so we can see kinda with our own perspective, like, okay, these chairs really are, so that we feel more comfortable voting, yes, we can do that too?
Absolutely. More than happy to take, if you wanna do it as a board, if we wanna do it individually, I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay.
Um, because it, some of this is, we're not at that critical level yet.
Right.
But it will be coming at some point in the near future.
Yeah. Okay.
The, the, the last item on the, the bid, which is the student storage units, um, the bid we put out was to look at currently at Lee Elementary School in the second, third and fourth grade classrooms. Um, for those of you who have elementary kids or have been in the elementary school and seen it, there's kinda cubbies in the back. There's, there's a, storage units along the top, excuse me. Um, and then there's like a, a cubby unit that may have like eight or ten hooks in them. Many of the hooks are broken. Teachers have made, um, spouses, moms and dads have come in and, and created enough coat hooks for kids. So, one of the things that, what we put out there for bid was to put in the second, third and fourth grade classroom, the same style cubbies as in the kindergarten and first. So, each child has their own slot. Above the cubbies is storage for classroom materials. Um, and then there is a teacher cabinet that's lockable for their coat or purses or personal belongings along the one wall. Um, and in most cases, we can get thirty to thirty-two's cubbies along that wall. There are some that we may have to wrap around because currently some classrooms it does wrap around. Um, so, the look would be the same. Um, if you've looked at the cubbies and, I probably should've taken pictures, they are very worn and a lot of the hooks are not, there's not enough hooks for kids' coats. Okay. So, what we would look at is, in the bid, it tears out all of those. It puts in a new cubby system. It takes roughly a, uh, two-day process once they're made to come in and demo and install and put back. So, that will be, we would be looking at starting after the end of the school year, um, just because there's a lot of stuff in those classrooms and I don't wanna disrupt the, uh, teacher. So, yeah, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll kinda steal your thunder here on this one. Um, the other piece is the art room sink at the elementary school was part of the bid. Um, it is a regular sink with a drinking fountain. It is not made for an art room classroom. Uh, it is not deep, so it would call for a new countertop and a new sink in that classroom, um, made for an art room. It replaces the countertops and sinks in the K-one buildings, which I think that addition was put on in ninety-six?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. Um, you know, they're twenty years old. It's a formica top. There, many of it's are, are coming apart. We've had to do some repairs in some of those. Um, it would replace all the countertops and put new sinks in those classrooms. Um, it would, in the band room, which would be room one twenty-seven, the current structure where the kids store their instruments, lock them up to go to the classroom, we need new, um, what's?
Hafts.
Hafts, which are right currently, they're a plastic haft which allows the, the door to lock. Many of them are broken or missing, um, so we need to replace and fix those. In room one twenty-five, which is in the actual band room, it would call, the current structure does not allow for enough storage. The instruments stick out. So, we would rip that storage out and put a new structure. So, that's budgeted roughly about ten thousand dollars for that piece of it to accommodate those. What we bid out also was for in the middle school, and as you look at, this is where I'm at around here, the cubbies for the elementary school. Um, the, our recommended vendor would be for M.L. Shaner Construction. Uh, they came in on a per-classroom allotment. Um, and you've got, it, it is a, a large chunk. It's about twelve thousand dollars a classroom, thirteen thousand dollars a classroom, but you're completely tearing that out and putting a new, um, organization, student cubbies.
System.
Correct. Um, you'll see down here, band, a band room one twenty-seven, which is replacing the hat, the haft. Am I pronouncing it correctly? Um, and then the, um, actual, it's about ninety-three hundred dollars for the other room, which currently the system isn't, for whatever reason, it's not designed for, our instruments stick out and they cause problems in that room. We looked at putting those same cubby systems in the middle school for fifth grade because currently in the fifth grade classrooms, it varies. In one classroom, a teacher looks like they've got an organization rack that you might see for a closet, um, that they put in. In one classroom, there's a, along the wall, there's hooks. The cost to do that same system in the middle school would be about fifty-two thousand dollars for four classrooms. Um, what I, I'm not recommending that at this point. Uh, I'm recommending looking at a locker option so that students have a place to put their stuff in, in the middle school. There is that space. When you walk in the middle school, on the right-hand side, as you go back to the fifth grade, there is no lockers in that area. That's where we would be looking at putting. You can get a locker, approximately about a hundred dollars a locker. If we needed about a hundred and twenty lockers for fifth grade, you're talking twelve, fifteen, sixteen thousand for installing. That's a significant savings over fifty-two thousand. And if it does, if it meets the needs, there are other things in the middle school that I'd like to use those dollars. Like there are some doors that are in desperate need of replacing, um, or, um, other items that we could look at that are allowable by the bond. So, at this point, I'm not recommending this piece of it, which is over here. Um, I took that fifty-two thousand out and I budgeted temporarily about eighteen thousand dollars for lockers, um, cause I'm, I'm meeting with a locker vendor, um, next, at the end of next week. Um, so, tonight is the technology and I'll bring back to you at the second meeting in, in March on the twenty-eighth, the cubby system, um, and the sinks and the countertops for approval.
Okay.
Did I miss anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Next is portion of our meeting for public comments. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, they can do so by coming up to the podium. There's a card that you can leave your name or phone number. If you have a question that you need answered, um, it is not a question and answer period, but just public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No? Okay. We'll move on to our action items. Uh, first one is approval of the Michigan State High School clay target league club sport. And there is a sample resolution.
Motion to accept the recommendation. Superintendent approved the Michigan State High School clay target league is a club sport for Michigan High School.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Next, approval of a board member to attend the McComb Intermediate School District budget presentation. This is the annual meeting that the ISD has to go over their budget. And someone from the board has to be, someone from Richmond's board has to be there to represent us at that meeting. So I am looking for someone to make the motion to appoint someone to attend that meeting, which is March 31st at 6:30 at the ISD Bowvinsin School.
Is it fair to ask, is anybody interested in doing that?
Do we need to point first?
Well, is anybody interested in going and doing it? I'm not doing it, so someone else is gonna have to.
I'm available Thursday.
You work on Thursdays? Okay.
I'm not available Thursday.
I'm out of state.
Okay, crickets. You can appoint Jeff, but since he's not here to tell us whether he can make it. I mean, truly, the treasurer of the board should attend a budget hearing, but since he's not here, we can always appoint him. And if he can't make it, then he'll have to find someone to go in his place. You can make the motion if you like.
I mean, we haven't heard from Dan or Kyle. Are you guys able to, not willing to, want to, no, anything?
Typically, Thursday isn't my best night. I don't know, my wife's scheduled it far out to, to say yea or nay. Spring evenings aren't great for me in season, but, I mean, if we nominate Jeff and he can't, I can maybe find a workaround.
Okay. I motion to accept the recommendation of the Board of Education and appoint Jeff Toit as Richmond Community Schools Board of Education Representative to attend the McComb Intermediate School District presentation regarding county services, programs, and budget. This presentation will be held on Thursday, March 31st, 2016 at 6:30 PM at the MISD Keith Bowvinsin School located on Frazo Road, Warren, Michigan 48089.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Other than the reason I'm not going, I can't even vote on the budget, being an employee of the ISD, so there would be no sense having me attend. I've gone before and I know Tracy has gone before, but that's why I'm saying I'm out. Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. But just so we all understand, someone has to go. They do. Next, approval of contract with TEL Systems for audio and video presentation systems. There is a sample motion.
Can I just interject? It was pointed out on page two of this, at the very top, the action requested did not match it, so I corrected it on your sheet in the one online. It says B on there. Twelve, one, A, excuse me, twelve, C, one, A. And I highlighted it, that just, it, when I was copying the template over, I did, forgot to change that. So on the official minutes, it's now reflecting and it's highlighted in yellow on, on the actual sheet, so. Yours is highlighted on yours, so.
Okay, okay, there's, the resolution's good though, right?
Yes, the resolution is-
There's a sample resolution?
And there's still the TEL Systems, right?
Yeah, can I just, one more before you, I'm sorry. The, the resolution, it's for the dollar amount of 164,355. But I'm asking for an additional 10 so that we have discretion. In all the other bonds, you've given me the latitude of up to a certain dollar amount, so I didn't have to come back to you. I don't expect it because the way we wrote the bond, everything should be included. But when you open a wall up, there may be something that comes up that we gotta address. And so that's what that additional 10,000, just as a discretion, so I don't have to come back to you in two weeks and hold up a project to get your approval.
Okay.
So, no.
Okay. Now, who would like to make the motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a contract with TEL Systems for audio and video presentation systems for a total not to exceed 164,355 dollars, for which funding from the 2013 voter-approved bond is authorized. Furthermore, the superintendent is authorized to increase the contract with TEL Systems up to 10,000 dollars as a contingency to address site conditions not known.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Tracy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Last, approval of Marine Corps Educator Workshop. Brian?
Several weeks ago, actually months ago, I was approached about attending a Marine Corps Educator Workshop. And at the time, I declined the offer because I didn't see the direct connection to where, for my current role. I had the opportunity to meet with the Marine Corps and talk, learn more about the educator workshop. And in a nutshell, it is boot camp for educators. They take a, 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 a regular boot camp and give you a samp, sample of what the Marines experience. But the more important, I think, is the reason why they do certain things. And their whole goal is how you unify and create a team for a common purpose and a mission. And so after speaking to several of the educators who have gone through it, I, I felt it would be very valuable for me in terms of what I'm trying to do as an organization, unifying an organization and to move in, into one direction. With this though, there's some conflicts with our current board policy. One is, first of all, I am planning on taking vacation time so it would not be necessarily district's time to go to attend. It is in Paris Island, South Carolina. There is no expenses to the district. It is 100% funded by the United States Marine Corps. They choose 40 educators east of the Mississippi to attend this. So I was one of them that was selected to attend. However, while I'm there, I am an agent of the, of the district. I'm still representing Richmond Community Schools. And our current board policy, and I think I attached it in the backup, prohibits me from accepting any donation over 56 dollars. So I would be asking to attend this and for the board to waive the board policy 11/30 so that I could attend this and accept this value of this trip. It's from April 4th through April 8th. They, they come pick you up at your house and you experience everything the military does. And there's a couple pictures in there that show what, what it's gonna go through. I have-
So we'll get pictures?
You will get pictures.
I hope so.
I have, I have started my training on this to prepare. But I, but I think, the bigger picture is that the purpose why the Marines do this is, and this was in education when I had an opportunity to go meet with them, is they're, they are looking for bright, intelligent, creative people in the Marines. They're not just looking for anybody. And there's a lot of options that our students have available to them, whether they're in the musical field and going into the Marines to various programs that they have to get colleges paid for and what they experience. And it really opened my eyes to what our students have available to them. And it's my hope to, to, to bring that back because this is an option for students after college, whether it's the Marines or any armed forces, or whether it's college or a trade school. It's just being able to provide them options of what's gonna work for them and their family. So I, I'm requesting to attend this. And in this request, to have the board waive board policy 1130 so that I could attend it. Again, there is no cost to the district at all.
There's a sample resolution.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and waive the board policy 1130 and allow the superintendent to attend the educator workshop through the United States Marine Corps from April 4th through April 8th, 2016 at no cost to the district. Furthermore, the Board of Education does hereby recognize that while the superintendent is taking vacation time to attend this workshop, he will remain a representative of the district during his attendance at the educator workshop.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I just wanna say, I think this is cool. I think, I looked at all pictures and I think it's really-
Cool. I'm hoping that you can bring it back to the school and I, I'm hoping that the school, the high school is supportive of students who wanna go into the military. But my husband was a Marine and when he was in high school, he was told he was making a mistake going into the Marines. And I'm hoping that that tone has changed, that we are more supportive of kids doing that. So I'm hoping by you going and learning about all the opportunities, that you can bring that back and we can let, you know, kids know this is an option and maybe a good option for them and support what they wanna do.
Well, I know our high school council, they do a lot in getting the Marines, the National Guards, the Army in here, providing opportunities for kids to, to, to hear about their programs. I've seen on the facilities oftentimes them booking the rooms. So I think that, that attitude has changed. But I think there's so much more that, like I said, I was astounded by options for students nowadays and really what they're looking for in a student, so.
Good for you. Good luck. I can't wait to see pictures.
Good luck. I just wanted everyone to know that I'm involved signing my name on there so that he could go do this.
I don't know if this is true or not, but they did say, just like Marine Barrick, there is a script you read when you arrive that you get, the call home that says, "I am here, I am safe, I will see you in eight weeks." So I'm hoping that I don't have to make that call to my wife and I'll say, "I'm seeing you in four days." Of course, she may want that, so. It's, it, it will be an experience.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We adjourned, I know too.